It's my pleasure to call the Kansas State Board of Education meeting to order. Everyone is here except for Carolyn Campbell, who is still in with her daughter and we our thoughts and prayers go out to her as she I believe has some operation today. Well, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Dean Horace, seconded by Kathy Bush. All those in favor, please signify by raising their right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes nine zero. The first, second item on our agenda today is to receive the Career and Technical Students Organization report. Jay Scott is here to lead us in that and this is always one of the more exciting opportunities. We've had a lot of them, but this is, this is a big one. We're really happy to have you and hear about the student-
Could you be brief too, so we can hear them?
Stole my thunder, okay, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I start now?
You're on, you're going. You've already been, you've already been reprimanded before it even starts.
Yeah, I know. Funny how that works. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board for allowing time for the presidents of each of our career and technical student organizations in Kansas to come and share with you a little more about themselves and their respective organizations. It's also the annual moment for me to be shown up by students. So today, we're celebrating Career and Technical Student Organization Citizenship Day 2016. We're excited to be able to host our eight different student presidents for our career and technical student organizations in Kansas. What better way to celebrate than to hear from the best and brightest of our student leaders in our Kansas schools? We know, after your board meeting yesterday, we know that to be a successful Kansas high school graduate, students need to develop academically, cognitively, they need to develop technical and employability skills along with civic engagement. And by participating in important, these important organizations, the students you see to my right, they are developing in all of those areas. In addition to those four areas, five areas, excuse me, in addition to those, they're developing leadership skills that will last them a lifetime. So very proud to have them come and speak with the board today. From the classroom to the boardroom, our CTSO students apply their learning in authentic experiences, whether it be co-curricular training in the classroom, local, regional, state, and national competitions, love those, or like today, representing their organization at the state level. CTSO students gain valuable knowledge and skills through co-curricular activities related to their interests and talents, getting a head start on crafting their career. The CTSO experience would not be possible without passionate dedication and commitment of the many chapter advisors at both the high school and post-secondary levels in Kansas and our own KSDE state advisors who are meeting right now to improve their respective organizations. We're very thankful for the chapter advisors, state advisors' efforts on behalf of our students in Kansas. If I could, the people who are present, who are one of those, please stand up. Local chapter advisors, state advisors. Thank you. So before I turn this over to the stars of the show, I want to take a moment to thank the student leaders for being here today. It takes a great deal of courage. I know you wanted to be in school today. But it takes a great deal of courage to be here today and to represent your organization. We know you'll do well. So we thank you for taking the time to be here. At this time, each of the state eight student officers will present a little bit about themselves and about the organizations. Once they're done, there'll be time for questions and comments. So we'll start with our first student.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. So according to the Washington Post, out of 32,000 students in 169 different colleges and universities, 40% of those students fail to graduate with complex reasoning skills that you need to have in the workplace. Students cannot get the basic skills that they need to have in the classroom setting alone. This is where Business Professionals of America comes in. I know that BPA has provided opportunities for me and others all across the nation, teaching us these soft skills that we do not get in the classroom. Through BPA, we learn these skills in many ways. First of all, we learn collaboration through teamwork by working together to solve a common goal. In BPA, we provide the opportunity to work as a team. Secondly, we are taught to effectively communicate with one another. Instead of using our thumbs to talk to each other, we talk face to face. We have the opportunity to talk with business professionals through philanthropies and other community service projects throughout the year. Lastly, we are faced with research and deadlines and we constantly prioritize and problem solve under pressure. I know the importance of the ACT and the state assessments, believe me, I put pressure on myself. And I know that it's acceptance into college, but it doesn't really help for your life. And these soft skills that we gain through BPA carry out with us for the rest of our lives. And that to me is success beyond measure. Thank you very much.
I'm the president of DECA and that's what I'll be speaking about. DECA helps the students in the multiple categories it provides, whether it be marketing, finance, entrepreneurship, ETC, as well as develop leaders with leadership, actual leadership experience, and help them benefit their community through something that's unique in the organization, and that's real world experience. DECA not only has you going right about a topic, but it forces you to go out and experience it and actually do it. Whether you're simulating a business conference with your group and working on a team activity, or merely go, or not merely, actually going out and running a business for your learner-earned project, seeing what it takes to sell the customers, what kind of market demand there is, and then satisfying that needed demand. See, DECA recognizes the fact that trial and error in the business world is one of the best ways to learn, but it's unique because it offers you a firm guidance while you go through these trial and errors. That's a valuable asset and opportunity that not many people get to see growing up in the world, especially the business world. So the way DECA helps is not only by teaching you, giving you a good curriculum, but it greatly impacts the students' lives and helps them benefit in the future by giving them that experience that they need. That way, they learn, no matter what category they pick, skills in every single department and also skills that will help them, no matter what industry or field they choose to go into. So to sum up basically what I just said, DECA recognizes that experience is the best way to teach and that's exactly how DECA teaches it. Thank you.
I'm Ashton Roddinghouse, Kansas Future Business Leaders of America State President and our National Treasurer. Our name states that we are the Future Business Leaders of America. Many of EPLA's goals focus on leading our members into the working world. These include: Developing competent, aggressive business leaders; facilitating the transition from school to work; developing character; preparing for useful citizenship; and fostering patriotism. EPLA prepares members to attend leadership conferences, business competitions, and inspiring workshops to better develop the skills that every student needs to be successful in the real world. Through these conferences, the networking possibilities are endless. Through our competitions, the real world experiences are phenomenal. And through our workshops comes the inspiration to do bigger and better things. EPLA is centered on preparing students for their career path. One line in our EPLA creed states, "I believe every person should prepare for a useful occupation and carry on that occupation in a manner that brings the greatest good to the greatest number." This line in our creed implies that we must prepare our members through education to develop a better knowledge and understanding of our chosen career paths. Through educational and real world experiences, we are providing business skills and concepts to develop every member so they can achieve a successful career. Not only does our organization prepare us for our career path, but educates us on how to teach the leadership skills as well. The Future Business Leaders will continue to lead its members to a successful career path by connecting with members, community leaders, and business leaders. Thank you very much.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Family, career, community, and leadership, the four pillars of life. Having the pleasure of being here today in the presence of all of you gives me the sense that I am surrounded by those who have a foundation built upon these four pillars. Each and every one of us is here today because we share an inner spark, the desire, the want to have the basic elements to a successful life. Just being here today says so much about our characters. I'm Lane Goodwin. I'm the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Kansas State President. I am a 16-year-old sophomore at Goodland High School. I am the daughter of divorced parents. I have one brother. I have been raised in a big city in Florida and now I'm being raised in a rural community in Kansas. My dad is an IT manager and my mom is a ranch manager. I am like so many of my peers across the state and the country, but yet I am so different. I stand before you today not with fear and uncertainty, but with confidence and courage and optimism. Unfortunately, I can't say the same about all the kids in the state of Kansas. They need the skills that FCCLA and CTSOs like these can provide to them. I am one of 4,500 Kansas FCCLA members and there should be more of us. Each state, each student in this great state should be able to experience the benefits of FCCLA. FCCLA is a source for many non-academic skills that the youth of this great state deserve. There is no youth organization more equipped to provide the opportunities and tools that we are striving for, those four pillars of life. FCCLA has no socioeconomic, no cultural, no racial, or financial limits. Through FCCLA's many national programs, through our star events, through our advisors, our leaders, our members, our trainings, and the opportunities that we have, there's a lot for us. The tools are available to build our futures. FCCLA's mission is to promote personal growth and leadership development through family and consumer sciences education, focusing on the multiple roles of family member, wage earner, community leader. Members develop skills for life through character development, creative and critical thinking, interpersonal communication, practical knowledge, and career preparation. Can you imagine every Kansas student graduating fully prepared for the future? Every student having top-notch collaborative, communication, leadership, and life skills? The four pillars of life, I can, Kansas can. Excellence comes through contribution and participation. Every Kansas student deserves excellence. We are family, career, and community leaders of America. We are excellence. Thank you.
If someone were to ask me what my favorite childhood memory was, it wouldn't take long for me to respond with "the county fair." I love the county fair and everything about it, including the livestock shows, concession stand food, and of course, the carnival attractions. However, my absolute favorite thing about the county fair is seeing the whole town come out to support the youth and celebrate what agriculture means to our community. According to the American Farm Bureau Federation, Americans only spend about 10% of their disposable income on food compared to 36% in countries like the Philippines. Also, $139 billion worth of American agricultural products were exported around the globe in 2015, making it one of the few U.S. business sectors with higher export rate than import. The FFA has allowed more than 8,900 members across the state and 630,000 members across the nation to take advantage of the opportunities that this industry provides. Just this year, 39 Kansas FFA members were able to represent Kansas at the national level for having outstanding supervised agricultural experiences. Through students' SAEs, they are able to develop specific skills which will be used in their future careers, as well as encouraging young entrepreneurs to thrive. In fact, the Surefire Ag Entrepreneurship Program recognizes outstanding high school members who are operating their own business while still in high school. These students, as you may have heard during, these students, as you may have heard, are recognized during radio commercials aired during K-State Big 12 football games. This is just one way that our membership is encouraged to take an active role in bettering tomorrow. This last fall, during the National FFA Convention, Dr. Rick Riggsby shared, "The world needs what FFA has." Not only do I believe in this statement, but I believe that the world needs what all career technical student organizations can provide. Thank you for this opportunity.
Ask yourselves, have you ever known anybody that's never gotten sick or has never gotten injured, a broken bone, or even strep throat or something? Well, if you have, please tell me, I'd like to congratulate them. That's very impressive. That's what HOSA is. We train people to go into the medicinal field. It shows people the competition that it takes to get into medical fields. It shows them all the different varieties that the medical field has to offer, all the different, the wide spectrum that it has to offer. It shows people that there's a lot we can do to help. And the competitions that we show, or that we can compete in, it really helps us fully understand what we can do. We have different EMT competitions, we have CNA, nursing, path physiology. There's a so wide variety inside of the medical field and that's what HOSA is about. It's about teaching you and making you learn what the medical field is. It helps you grow as a person and I think that is something that we dearly need. One of the great things about HOSA is it really helps you grow as a person, not only as a scholar. It teaches you what you need to survive really, or to thrive, I suppose. HOSA is a great organization because it helps people and it trains all the nurses that will help you when you're sick, when you have a flu, or when you can't get out of bed when you're older, or the doctors that will help heal bones, casts, or even the radiologists that will say, "You have a minor fracture in your arm." All those wide varieties and everything we need today, from pharmacy to the CNA in a nursing home, there's everything we need and that's what HOSA prepares you for. It helps you learn what you can do and really thrive as a person. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Bethany Ellis. I'm the high school president of Skills USA Kansas Organization. Skills USA is a partnership between students, teachers, and business and industry. The teachers work with the students to prepare them to enter the world of business and industry. Through Skills USA, the students build better workplace and technical skills. The workplace skills comes from teachers putting their students to work on different projects and making sure the projects are completed. With students working on projects, they learn the required skills it takes to stay on task, work independently, and work in groups, and complete projects correctly the first time, and follow instructions given to them. The technical skills that the students learn from the teachers connect them on a stronger level to the business field that they would like to pursue as a possible career. These paths could, these career paths could be things in like architecture, engineering, criminal justice, construction, and many others. With these workplace and technical skills, the students acquire from criteria that has been ingrained in academics, they become connected to a strong future workforce of America. Being a senior in high school, I have had the opportunity to experience these academics firsthand. Four years ago, I found out that I loved architecture. With being able to continue my education and learn more, I have since found that it is what I want to pursue as my career path. Through my years in high school, I have learned how to manage my time for assignments and also how to determine which assignments are more important to get those done first. I have set limits for myself, which, academically, and I have teachers who push me past these limits because they know I can do better. Because of teachers pushing me to do my best and be my best, I know that I will be willing to work, whether it be for schoolwork or for work for money. With technical skills such as computerated drafting and architectural drafting, and workplace skills such as being able to help other, teach other students, work with customers on what they want to keep them happy, and calm down a mad customer, having these technical and workplace skills and academics has helped me tremendously through my work and schooling and with Skills USA. After learning these skills, I know that I will become a part of America's future workforce. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jade Cole, President of the Technology Student Association. First off, I would like to thank you all for being here and allowing me and my fellow CTSO leaders to take on this awesome opportunity. Four years ago, you couldn't have told me that I would be standing up here. I wouldn't have believed you if you would have said that I would run for national office and speak in front of over 5,000 people, like I did last year. And I wouldn't have been convinced that I would have been a state officer for three years. But I was born into TSA, so I guess it's expected eventually, right? I'm unique because my advisor is my mom, and my local advisor, and my state advisor, hence why it's being born into TSA. TSA's mission is to foster personal growth, leadership, and opportunities in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Members apply and integrate these concepts through co-curricular activities, competitions, and related programs. The two nationally recognized related programs are Project Lead the Way and Engineering by Design. TSA also has career exploratory competitive events, 31 on the middle school level and 34 on the high school level. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for TSA and the opportunities it has provided for me and students across Kansas, the nation, and even beyond that. TSA has also provided me and my fellow small-town schoolmates the opportunity to work with STEM curriculum because we don't have very many that focus in the STEM area, and TSA has helped fill that void for us. All CTSOs here today are very important. They're important in building better futures for students and for our future workforce. Everything from programs to competitions and everything that everybody else has said here today helps to integrate core curriculum and STEM and tech classes so that students can make education more life-applicable. We live in an ever-changing world, growing day by day more technology-based. Every day, we have to learn to live in a technical world, which is TSA's motto, and every day, it stands true. TSA is like the instruction manual helping to guide us to best utilize the technology around us. Once again, I would like to thank you for your continued support for our CTSOs. Thank you.
You guys did a great job. Thank you very much. Really terrific. And you're right, I never imagined yourself up there and here you are. You guys were fantastic. Thank you very much. Let's give them a round of applause again. Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions, comments for any students? Why don't we start with BPA? We'll just go in that order.
I'm Elena Macias and I'm in BPA, of course, and I'm from Mayes South High School.
I'm Matthew Colburn, I go to Northwest High in Dove, and I also refer to DECA.
I'm Ashton Roddinghouse and I'm a senior at Willso High School and I represent Kansas EPLA.
I'm Wayne Goodwin, I go to Goodland Junior Senior High School, I'm a sophomore there and I represent FCCLA.
I'm Caitlin Bonhamless, I'm a senior at Clay Center Community High School and I'm here with the FFA.
I'm Matthew Teck, I go to Winfield High School and I represent Kansas HOSA.
I'm Bethany Ellis, I'm a senior at Reed High School and I represent Skills USA Kansas.
I'm Jade Cole, I'm a senior at Olby High School and I represent USA.
Wow, large schools, small schools, districts, and what a great representation, you know. Couldn't have picked them any better. Ken Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always a highlight for us and for me when you all come because you give us hope that the business we're about is the right thing to be doing. One of you spoke about a speaker that you heard who said, "The world needs you." Well, that's very true. And it just, it occurs to me that if we could just, if we could just put every kid into a CTSO, we would accomplish our goals and we could go home. Because this is exactly what we're intending to do in the state of Kansas, is create a state full of kids who, like you. I mean, you're such, you're so powerful. I pity Jim Porter who has to follow you. Please don't. But you're so impressive and we appreciate you and I would just encourage you somehow to spread the gospel of CTSOs through your schools and involve more kids. I don't know how to go about making that happen, but that's what we, that's what needs to happen. Thank you.
Pretty quiet this morning from this group. They're really, you're a little intimidating.
Well, they've got a full day ahead of them. They are heading back over to the Capitol Plaza for further leadership training with their peers, other state officers. We have a luncheon, very important part of the day, luncheon that all the board is invited to over at the Capitol Plaza. There'll be KSDE staff, there'll be K-Boer staff there, along with many state officers, chapter advisors, state advisors, so it'll be a wonderful event. And then this afternoon, they get to go to the State House, I believe, and spend some time over there. So very full day and, but they're starting off with the, with the best group this morning. So thank you for your attention and thank you for your continued support with, for CTE and CTSOs.
We look forward to the luncheon this afternoon. It's always one of the highlights of our, the many opportunities we have to interact with folks. And this interaction is with students. And that's, that's unique and very powerful, so take advantage of it. If you have any ideas about education, be ready at lunch. You've got our full attention and I appreciate that. Thank you for your leadership. It makes a difference every day in your schools. As a former high school principal, I can tell you just how important it is to have great leaders like you for the great programs that you represent in our schools because they do, as Ken said, make a difference and would change the landscape of how we do school. Thank you very much. See you at lunch. Mr. Dorr? See you in a little while. Where'd Mr., what'd you do with Porter? Oh, there you are. Look down there, he's gone. The next item on our agenda is to receive the findings and recommendations of the Emergency Safety Intervention Task Force and a report on emergency safety intervention data. Presenting today are Jim Porter and Rocky Knuckles. We are very excited and want to thank both of you for your leadership and determination to take on a very tough task and be very hopeful, successful. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to have words with whoever scheduled us right after the kids.
That was deliberate.
The Emergency Safety Intervention Task Force met as a result of legislation that empowered us to come together and, and our mission was to study and review the use of emergency safety interventions and prepare and submit a report of its findings and recommendations concerning the SI to the governor and the legislature before June the 20th. So we met that deadline. We met five times from late, from early August through December with the entire task force. Also, we had a subcommittee made up of six people, two that I appointed and two that Rocky appointed, plus the two of us, to do some drafting and then we presented those drafts to the committee. It was, in my experience, it was a very valuable process. We have several people, there are 16 members, there are 17 members of the task force. Many of them are here today and you'll see there who they are. And I'm going to take a minute to turn around since some of them just came in. I know Rocky, you'll be hearing from Rocky in a few minutes. Catherine Johnson was thinking she might be able to be here, but I haven't seen her. She was with disability rights, but is now with KU. Chris is not able to be here today, but I believe Leslie Girard, who you met yesterday, is here. Are you here, Leslie? Betty Arnold is the president of the school board in Wichita. And Sarah Loquist, who is here, is an attorney with the KSB. Terry Collins is here. And Kathy Kershendrock Ostmeyer, how close did I get, Kathy?
You did great.
Was here also, you met, yes. Was, was here also, you met yesterday. Jawanda Mast is a parent in the Alatha School District of a student with disabilities. John Rubin is a member of the House of Representatives. John Hurla is a parent in the Seaman School District of a child with, or children with disabilities. Jane Adams, who also indicated, is Jane here? Don't see her, but she indicated that she probably would be. We're running a few minutes ahead, so she may come in. Marvin Miller, who you met yesterday, is a parent of a child with disabilities and is the incoming president of SEAC. And Joan Robbins, who you met yesterday, is a former chair of SEAC and is with the Blue Valley School District. And then Laurie Jurgensen is the person that represented the State Department, and of course, I represented the State Board of Education. We made several conclusions. I think what is important, the word lens has been used several times. Yesterday in the presentation, the word lens was used this morning in our breakfast. Jim used the word lens when he was talking about trying to see through the lens of other people. We use this term a whole lot in our discussion because each one of us comes from our own background. Each one of us has had different experiences with emergency safety interventions and a lot of other things, and in order for us to come to solutions, we had to look through the lens of the other people in the room. And we were able to have many, very meaningful discussions and try to understand where each group was coming from, because our goal in, in this case is that, in fact, each student is safe in school, and that includes each student. And that includes that student that is injurious to their self or to others, and it also includes those students who may be the recipient. And so, we, after a whole lot of discussion, we came up with several recommendations, and this is going to, they're going to be presented to the House Education Committee this afternoon, the House Committee on Children and Seniors, and I fit that category, tomorrow morning, and then the Senate Education Committee tomorrow afternoon. Each occurrence, each occurrence will be considered, and you have this all in your packet, each occurrence will be considered an incident. We were having difficulty deciding, you know, and that every time it's used, that is a reportable incident. And then we dealt with the issue of medical. The law, the statute indicated that if a student has a medical need from a physician, they cannot be secluded. We discussed this a great deal because restraint was not considered in that process in the statute, but we had a great deal of discussion, and we determined that perhaps that that needs to be covered, but one of our members talked about, and I won't identify the member, but talked about the fact that he has a child that, that has, that is probably going to have to have back, that is going to have to have back surgery, that is fragile, but she is also a runner. So, if, so, so it would be very logical for that student to have a medical statement that they cannot be restrained, but if that student runs out into traffic, there needs to be an exception to allow that sort of thing to happen. So, that, so at that point, the restraint may be more important than the medical condition because one of them would be injurious and the other one could very well be life-threatening. And so, that was the reason for that. And then, we will, we have asked that there needs to be more than just a note from the doctor. Those of us that, and I probably shouldn't say this, but the people on the task force can attest that I say a lot of things that I probably shouldn't say. We, those of us that are, that have been school administrators know that we get notes from doctors all the time that says Johnny can't be in PE or something like that. So, we thought it was important for the, for the medical staff to actually give us alternatives and to, more than just a, just a out-of-PE-type note, but something that actually identifies what can be done as an alternative, and if we're going to keep kids safe, we need to know how to do that. Parents can designate the method of notification and can receive, receive only one notification for multiple incidents on the same day. Prior to this, if there were 15 incidents in a day, there had to be 15 notifications. They can be, and there is a requirement that parents need to be notified on the same day if an ESI occurs. That remains in force, but you may not necessarily have to call them now 15 times or two times in that day, but the written notices are all still a requirement. Allow parents to designate email for written notification instead of everything having to be sent. And then, we added several things to the list of things that parents need to know, the description of what led up to it, behaviors that made the ESI necessary, what was done in transition, the child back to the educational setting, other information, and this is already required, start time, duration, type, stop time, et cetera, space for parent to feedback, invitation to the parents to contact the school, invocation, and strong encouragement for the parents. Currently, there's a requirement that the parents have to meet after the third day. I'm going to talk about that in just a few minutes. That is no longer the case. And email and phone contact information for the school. We want to keep this information because we want to be able to track patterns, and we want to be able to track patterns and have data so we can, if we know what leads up to the necessity of an ESI, we may very well be able to prevent it, and that is the goal. The goal would be not to have to do the ESI, and then authorize school to group incidents together for the purpose of the first three of those if something happens during the There is a law enforcement exemption for ESI, but if the law enforcement is, if law enforcement is used and they perform either a seclusion or restraint, and I had ESI in there, and Rocky reminded me yesterday that, so I changed, we changed this because they have the exemption, but if a restraint is used by a law enforcement officer, there's now, our recommendation is that there is a requirement that the parent be contacted. They don't have to follow up with the other information. Basically, a lot of this is just simply common sense. Those of us that worked in schools know that if you have something that happens, you contact the parent, but we wanted to make sure that that was, that that was stated so that everybody understands that, because quite frankly, there have been places that didn't do that, and they, and that does create major problems, especially trust issues, and that's an issue I'll get to in a few minutes. Add gender and eligibility for free and reduced lunch to the statewide aggregate reporting. We report that anyway. That's just going to be something that's going to be easy to pull out, we believe, and recommend that the Data Governance Board, and that's the board from this agency, report aggregate data for actual numbers rather than less than 10. Let me give you an example of what we mean for that. There may not be, right now, unless there is 10 in a group, then whenever you get the state report, it says less than 10. If there is less than 10 at an individual school district, say African-American three-year-old boys, and there's less than 10 in a school district or a school building, then you can probably identify who that is. But if there's less than 10 on a statewide basis, you probably can't. So, we thought that it would be valuable information to actually know the number on the statewide basis, but maintain the less than 10 on, for privacy protection at both the district and the, and the building level. Remove the, this is a biggie, remove the requirement to meet with the parents after the third incident, but if a meeting is requested, that it has to happen within 10 school days, and this is a change because it said 10 days. So, example, and the example that we used, if an incident happens on December the 19th, and you go on Christmas break, there are 10 days before there's a school day. Also, that may be extended because parents have, in many cases, parents have difficulty, single parents have difficulty getting away. If you miss, if you miss work, you don't get paid, so that if a parent is, cannot make that timeframe, that they, it can be extended. Right now, the, the current legis, the current statute indicates that all children are invited to the meeting, so it could be a four-year-old, and we left, we wanted that to be at the discretion of the parent if the child is under 18. All recommendations, any recommendation, any request from a parent would cover all those things, and the focus of each meeting would be to provide proactive ways to reduce the need for any ESI. We met with, one of the people that met, we had one meeting where we probably had, what, 25 or 30 groups that came in, and one of them was the Archdiocese, and of course, and they had some valuable insight that the rest, when I was talking about looking through people's lenses, they gave us some insight that we didn't think. So, this is actually, if a meeting for a parental place student in a private school would be between the parent and the private school, there's concerns with people in private school that are providing information to the state, especially if they can be identified because basically people go to private school for private reasons. But if that student has an IEP, they're probably, the IEP team is probably the public school, and that the private school would have the responsibility to facilitate the, the public school IEP team if that was appropriate. And then, any statute or regulation resulting from this report needs to mirror each other. There doesn't need to be a group of regulations from here that is contrary to the statute. The statute would, of course, take precedent, but we need to work together with our colleagues from across the street so that, so that we have all this, so that everybody understands the process and it works. I want to thank Lauren Douglas. Lauren Douglas was a person of staff to our team from research. Are you here, Lauren? Very valuable. There may be people on our team who knew how to prepare this report. I can assure you that I was not among that group, and Lauren was a very valuable asset to our process. As a matter of fact, this would not be nearly as professionally done. I want to thanks to the members of the task force. I want to thank the people, the organizations that provided them. It was observed by one of our members that issues around ESI that were reported were more related to communication and respect than the actual use. The takeaway is that if communication happens, and effective communication happens, and respect is gained, then there is, then that benefits everybody. And people with different and sometimes competing points of view can work together if they're willing to look through the eyes of others. Compromise is not a bad word, but it is essential for success. Our next action is going to, on the current recommendations are to be, there's action that's going to be on our February agenda. That is totally unrelated, what I'm talking about now. That's the process that that's been going through for the last several months. Because of some, because of some deadlines, and this is not part of the task force, this is extra, but because of some deadlines that we need to meet, then we're going to be presented that, we've always seen it, or seen most of it, but we actually, I understand, need to both review that and vote on it at our next meeting, so I would encourage you, when we get our packets, to go over those regulations, which are different from this, and that's totally unrelated. We need to monitor what's happening across the street because, as I said, we're meeting with three committees today and tomorrow, and we want to make sure that we work together with them, and at the appropriate time, then this board needs to, needs to approve the report. And I'm going to encourage this board, and I'm going to encourage the committees that I visit with to, because this has been a collaborative effort, that it be accepted as written, because it would defeat the collaborative purpose, because everyone in the group probably would like to, all, all the people in the group would probably like to see something tweaked here and something tweaked there. But it worked because we all worked together and because we all, we all made compromises to make this work. So, that is what will be recommended. I think that it is significant to tell you that we took votes on two different meetings. The first meeting, I was elected chair, and Rocky was elected vice chair. Those were not unanimous votes for either of us. Five meetings later, when this report was presented, it was accepted by the group unanimously, and I think that that says a great deal for the willingness of the people of the task force to work together to solve problems collaboratively, and I want to thank them for the tremendous job that they did. A very valuable asset and help was the vice chairman, and he is now going to continue the presentation.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, members of the board. My name is Rocky Nichols, Executive Director of the Disability Rights Center, and when I met with Jim recently to talk about, you know, what would he like me to present, we had talked through it, and ultimately, where it was landed is to talk about how collectively the task force recommendations, the regulations promulgated by this Board of Education, and the statute now fully address all 15 of the U.S. Department of Education principles on the use of seclusion and restraint. And obviously, we've talked about this before, and you're very familiar with this document. U.S. Department of Education has put out this resource document that outlines 15 principles, and your staff has done an excellent job, and I've actually handed this out. This was produced by KSDE staff, and this crosswalks principle by principle and shows how the regulations and now the statute collectively addresses each of those 15 principles. And in fact, I mean, I want to brag a little bit for your staff, I think it, it does one better in that it also shows how KSDE TAZN, through their training materials, in almost all, if not all, of these instances, was already training on these principles, even if the principle wasn't specifically encompassed in the regulations that you all passed. And I think that's really important. Because as KSDE TAZN has done their training, and if you haven't, please go to the, to their website, there's a great page, excellent materials on, on training. Just as an outsider looking in, watching the trainings happening, talking to people, we felt very good about the fact that what was being trained to Kansas schools, to school teachers, to administrators across this state were the best practices, even if those best practices weren't yet encapsulated in Kansas policy. And so, we think it's, it's now very easy or easier, now that the Kansas policy encapsulates those best practices, they've already been trained on. And that's because of your leadership and the leadership of your staff, and so, I hope you all feel very good about that, and I wanted to make sure this was shared with you because everything that the task force did, the unanimous recommendations that we made, we feel show fidelity to and appreciation of and follow the past work in regards to the principles. And I think that's really important. Jim has already walked through all the specifics of it, but as we talked, we thought that would be something important for you to know, because this has been, this recommendation from the U.S. Department of Education, or I guess this resource document, has been something we've been talking about for so we've been talking about for some time. And I think we can all feel good about the policy, where it's landed, and the task force recommendations follow that as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're not off the spot yet.
We will now stand for questions.
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thanks to Jim and Rocky both for their leadership and the committee, the task force committee. I was going to ask about this document, to ask you to kind of walk through it with it, which you kind of did. So I'm going to extend my question. And your recommendations that the task force came up with, are these embedded in here as of yet or not?
Excellent question. This was written actually before the recommendations. And although some of the specifics have changed, each of the 15 principles is still addressed. It's just that it's addressed in a way that is, I think, more effective. Like, for example, you know, you'll find throughout here that there are principles to ensure that parents are informed of, of the use of, of seclusion and restraint. That is still in the task force recommendations. It's just the method by which it will now occur, if they're adopted, is more acceptable to schools and more workable. Whereas before, it technically said that you must contact the parent the same day, or the emergency safety contact. And then that left the question, well, what happens if you can't get a hold of them? Or if you call and you get a busy signal? Or the, or the, you know, the line's disconnected? And so, it was clarified that as long as schools attempt two or more methods of contact that same day, that that would satisfy the same-day requirement. So both the current law and this recommendation of the task force abide by that principle and these principles. It's just that the method now is more workable and more acceptable.
So I'm...
Going back to the, to that contact, and I left that out, the emergency contact, it was required in the other one, that if you couldn't get the parent, you, you contacted the emergency contact. Well, in many cases, the emergency contact's next-door neighbor. You don't want them knowing the details of, of your, in some cases, it may be your brother. In my case, it was always a neighbor, because we didn't have relatives. And other peoples in the, in the task force, it would have been acceptable, but you don't, but that's a privacy issue. And so, we wanted to clarify that. And, and, and the, the policy was, it was being interpreted by some that if I can't get them, I got to go find them. And that was pretty impractical, even though we, we support every effort to make sure that that contact happens. I just think that's common sense. But if it can't be, you're not in violation now if this, if this follows.
So then kind of a follow-up question, which might be to Randy, or maybe somebody from staff. Once these recommendations get adopted, or when they do, they would probably then be embedded in this document somehow or some way, or there'd be another document, or...
I can answer any question, Kathy, and so I'm going to answer that one. I don't know.
Fair enough.
I think, I think certainly that would be the goal, that we would make sure that's
We can, of course, update this and make this available as a guidance document. Oh, we had originally just made it available to the task force. But of course, we can update it and make it more widely available.
All right. Well, again, thank you for your work.
John Bacon?
Thank you. I don't know if this is a question for Jim or for Rocky, but I was trying, on the parent meeting after the third event, what is, what is the significance of the third event? Should it be more than two? Because what, what happens after the fourth, the fifth, the sixth?
Right. And that language actually came from another state. The state of Maine has as its policy that after the third event, it mandates a meeting. We actually came to a different conclusion on that. So the recommendation of the task force is to change that. So the task force recommendation is, there is now no mandatory meeting after the third event, or the second event, or X number of events. In its place, the task force is recommending that parents get more information about each incident, and parents be, and this was Jim's suggestion, strongly encouraged to call a meeting with the school to debrief and discuss the incident. And then, at that point, the school would then meet with the parent within 10 school days. So it's no longer, if the task force recommendation is adopted, it's no longer a debate of should it be three, or two, or 12, or what's the magic number? There is no magic number. Parents are given more information. And one of the backgrounds on the more information is that, let's say, a student is, some of the task force members provide an example of, what if a student is self-injurious? And what happens if because of that behavior, the three incidents happen on the first day? Which, which could happen. And under the task force recommendation, the parent has provided information, and if the parent's provided information that the student was self-injurious, and they already knew they were self-injurious, and they already worked with the school on, on how to deal with that, then why would you need to have a meeting? And so, instead of forcing a meeting after, you know, X number of times, it simply provides more information to parents, engages them more effectively. Now, the onus and the burden is on the parent to call the meeting. But with that more information, that parent has better informed consent to know when a meeting is appropriate and when it's not. And then if the parent wants to meet, then the school will meet with the parent, of course.
Okay, well, I was just reading this, and it looks like there is a magic number. And the magic number is more than two for this to trigger.
Under the current law, under the task force recommendations, that's not the case. The task force recommended a change to that, as I had laid out.
And we're recommending that the three meeting no longer be there. We're recommending that that is not the case.
So they could ask for one at one?
They could ask for one at one, or 30.
Or never.
Or...
It's up to the parent. Thank you.
The, the current law says we have to do it after three. We're recommending that that is not practical, that, that needs to be in the control of the parent, and they can make that request at any time.
Steve Roberts?
Engineer that I am, the word mechanical in principle, too. Is that defined somewhere on what a mechanical restraint is? I think we would all agree, we know what a, what a chemical restraint would be. But mechanical involves all sorts of things. Is that well-defined, or is that kind of nebulous?
It, it's actually defined under your current regulations, I believe. Your current regulations define mechanical restraint means any device or object used to eliminate students' movement.
Sally Cobble?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't bring up my speaking order yet. Go back to what John said. In this document that says draft, okay. Is this a document you're going to use for, well, because there's nothing crossed out that says third incident or anything?
The things that are in, over here are the...
I guess I need to know how to read this report.
Page two? Third bullet? No. Page 02. Yeah, page 02. Fourth bullet first, remove the requirement for schools to meet parents after the third incident.
Okay, so, but the...
The recommendations are actually the things that are...
Okay, they weren't crossed out and putting this. It's, it's all here.
The things that are behind all this is the current stuff. This, the things that are, that are dark are the actual recommendations.
You haven't done a cross-out. You have not gone through the, the present regulations, and the, and done the cross-outs and all of that. We're used to seeing that, that's... It looked like that, the current was part of the recommendations.
No, no, the recommendations are only what is...
I see where Kathy's going. They're used to seeing cross-outs.
I will, I will make a, make a point of making that clear in the future. You're the guinea pigs, we're getting ready to go on the road.
Present regulations are the last, the front and back of the last two pages. And then, the recommendations are the first pages.
And the format was written by legislative research, and thank you so much for doing it. And so, it follows that traditional format of reports that the legislature takes.
Okay, Ken Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim or Rocky, what is your expected or desired response from the legislature to this report?
Significant enthusiasm. We, we had, we had a representative, Representative Rubin is on our, was on our task force. And I actually asked him that question at our last meeting. What, what is our expectation as it goes forward? And he said that, basically, a group like this, that, you know, if it had all been disability rights advocates, or if it had all been school personnel, they wouldn't have paid much attention to it. Or if we had come out of this with a nine-to-eight vote, they may not pay attention. But, but because of, and I can only tell you what we've been told. Because this was a diverse group, that, that represented many aspects, including parents, including people that advocate for disability rights, including school districts, and it was a broad race, and it was unanimous, that he, in his experience, those were pretty well accepted as presented. And that's what we expect to happen. That's what we hope to happen. Is that reasonable?
What was your term? What type of enthusiasm?
I don't remember.
Don't remember? Ditto on that, on that, on that, on that term. And, and I will add that Representative Rubin, who was a member of the task force, my understanding is, I think he's already approached the reviser, his statute's office regarding a bill in that regard.
So there's no expectation that this will spawn a piece of legislation?
Well, it's been requested, is my understanding. That's what I was...
It has been requested.
Yes. Who knows what the future holds for this legislative session? Obviously, we're in a pretty interesting year. But I, I, I think there's great promise for making these positive changes, and great promise that because where the task force had agreement, we had unanimous agreement, I think that just helps lay the groundwork in that regard.
So, just as a follow-up, we'll be looking at the present regulations that we have.
The ones that are in the pipeline now? We'll be looking at those in February.
We'll be doing those in February, which will, will those, when we, if they, if they, they are approved, will those meet the recommendations that you're making in the report today?
They're unrelated.
They're unrelated.
Then we'll start the process again.
Then we start the process again to update our regulations and, and to meet the standard of the task force report.
And the last thing that was said at the task force meeting, whenever we were all there together, and all 17 of us were there, was that we hope that with the adoption of these recommendations, that we put this issue behind us. I also...
So one of your recommendations is not for further legislation?
We did not recommend further legislation.
You did not recommend further legislation.
Our mission was to, was to present a report.
Yes.
That's what we did. So we're not recommending legislation, but we're not, not recommending it either. We're recommending that if...
But we are going to be recommending that we change the policies that we control. The regulations that we control, we will take care of.
Is that, does that make sense, Lauren?
Hi, Lauren Douglas from the Legislative Research Department. My understanding is that the recommendations in this report could be put into bill draft form, and then certainly subject to whatever legislative consideration that they want to provide, and any amendments that they deem appropriate. But then, yes, you could also take whatever recommendations are contained in this report and amend the regulations. There is a note that whatever changes are made in statute would also be made to mirror the regulations, but ultimately, the statutes would control anyway, and would trump the regulations. So does that answer the question?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay. Dina Horst?
Thank you. Well, actually, Lauren said some of what I was going to say, that my recollection of what, what happens across the street and what can, can here. And my preference is that it happened here instead of across the street. But that's kind of beside the point. My other question has to do with the field and how we'll have this gap of time in between the changes that you recommend here and the, the actual implementation and approval of, of regulations. So what, what kind of, of information might be given to the field to kind of give them some sort of heads up? So there's not this space in between where some event happens that could have been covered or prevented by some of the things you're talking about here?
The current statute is in force. The current regulations are in force, and they cannot be, until we go through this process, they, they are controlling. Now, we can make, make sure that the field is aware of the recommendations, but they don't actually become, become enforceable until either the legislature makes a decision or we make a decision.
And I'm, I definitely am, am aware of that. But my concern is that, and it happens all the time, or has the potential of happening. I'm just hopeful that it's, that we inform the field, inform parents, et cetera, of what we're working toward. So there's some sense of where we're going, and there's not things, like I said, that happen in between that could have been prevented.
Understanding exactly what you're saying, Dina. Two things I would offer. One, hopefully, this will make you feel a little better, is again, your State Department of Education in TAZN has already been training on these things for some time. And so, the specific method by which, that may change. But, but the real, you know, the principles, the, the real focus, getting everyone on the same page on where we're going, that's already occurred. And so, the, the method of, you know, do you push this button or that button? Do you do it in this way or that way? That can be handled through, through simple training, and I think your training in technical assistance, people have proven themselves very able in that. And then, just one thing to consider, as you know, whenever policy is adopted, and then there's changes to policies, there are going to be lag times with those things. As one example, the issue of law enforcement, certified law enforcement, needing to be exempted from the policy, first came up in the fall of 2013, I believe. And those rules or regulations still technically haven't been promulgated in that regard, but they're before you, coming up in February. So yeah, there's always lag time on these things, but that's to be expected. We understand that, you understand that, and the field understands that, and you have great staff who can carry out technical assistance in that regard.
And that's my concern. And that's my concern, is that we're all understanding and we don't have some of the unrest that we've experienced previously. So. And I do appreciate all the work that you've done and the collaboration, the compromises that I know some made on both, from both points of view are a model. And things I used to watch occur across the street, I'm not sure that it always happens today and in, in, in Washington DC. But hopefully, we will continue to model that compromise that's possible through true communications with each other.
I think that one of the.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think one of the benefits of the task force is that it develops some relationships, though that now that those, those conversations are going to be easier because people know each other.
John Bacon.
Thank you. I'm still trying to get a little bit of clarification here. Okay, the gray area, Jim, you talked to refers to additional language for the private schools. Where is that language? Is that this last page here that we have? Is this proposed language in Appendix 1 or I?
I can answer that. The, the Appendix I was added because that was the original language that we worked out with the Archdiocese.
So is this language that you're proposing?
It, it, it is with one change. That change being, this language was written when the task force had not yet taken out the mandatory meeting after the third time. So we keep, the recommendation is to add language. So the last bullet point on 02 is the recommendation that comes from the Archdiocese. And this addresses their concern, which is specifically add language that when a student is parentally placed in private school, that the meeting that happens, previously, it was after the third. The task force is recommending that it happen when the parent requests it to happen. That that meeting be between the private school staff and the parent. And that if the student has an IEP, then that's one of the topics of the meeting. But then it's up to the parent to decide if they want to call an IEP team meeting. That specific recommendation came straight from the Archdiocese of Kansas City, Kansas.
The, when will we get the language, the written changes proposed from this committee? This obviously isn't it yet. When will we get that?
My understanding, it's being drafted as we speak by the Reviser's office.
Okay. So I thought that's what we were talking about today. The proposed language for the change to Section 5? Not yet? We don't have it yet? Okay, okay. Very good. All right, I'm jumping ahead. Thanks. No problem.
Seeing no further questions?
Well, the, the next part of our report is from Laura.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Julie Eeler, and this is Laura Jurgensen. And we're attorneys on the Early Childhood Special Education and Title Services Team. And the first thing I want to tell you about the handout is don't panic. It's huge and heavy, and I'm, I'm just going to speed walk you through some of the data before I turn it over to Laura. And I'm going to direct you to specific page numbers. So first, what we want to do is, as has been mentioned, the statutes had a list of data that needed to be reported to the legislature and the governor. And so this is going to be, this middle section, we'll just, we're just going to skim through, and I'll, I'll tell you how to navigate that. So what I first wanted to do was go through what the statute required to be reported. And I have, okay. So if, if you start on page six of your report, what I have done, oh, gosh, and I'm sorry. We do have copies for the public on the table. I want to make sure if, if people need to see that, it's over there. If you look on page six, what I've done here is, on this, I've highlighted the pieces that the, the statute specifically said needed to be reported. And the reason I highlighted that is you can see, for example, on number one, this is the number of incidents in which an emergency safety intervention, interventions were used on students who have an IEP. So that is the, the far right column that I've highlighted in yellow up here. But we've also, in some cases, provided additional data, and that's where we broke it out for restraint and seclusion. So I wanted to let you know, there's, there's a little bit more data in here than was required by the statute. But I've highlighted what, what is specifically required. So I'm, I'm just going to, these correlate with the statute. Number one, this section here, 72-89D04, subparagraph C, is where these are listed out. So, so we have the totals, then we have number of incidents for the 504 plan. Number of incidents where an emergency safety intervention was used on students who do not have either an IEP or a 504 plan. And then the total number of incidents of emergency safety intervention. And so I, you can, you can just see that we're getting some totals here. And then we have, now we switch on number five, is the total number of students who have behavior intervention plans that had an emergency safety intervention used. The bottom of page six is the total number of students who are physically restrained. Moving to the top of the next page, the total number of students placed in seclusion. Number eight is the maximum and median number of minutes, these are minutes now, of a student was placed in seclusion. The max, number nine, the maximum number of incidents in which an emergency safety interventions were used on a student. And again, you can see, like some of the others, we've broken that out also by seclusion or restraint. But the statute required the maximum. So number 10 here is where we're, we're just going to fly through tens of hundreds of pages of data. Yes.
When you're saying on page six and page seven, since I haven't read it, are these all institutions of education that report to us, which would include, I can't think of the place.
Are they accredited?
Or is this all the ESD and private schools?
No, so this is all accredited buildings. So if, if you go to page one of the full report, it does explain who is required to report. Each, let's see. Where did I see that here? Oh, thank you. So it's going to be under the second paragraph, it starts at the second sentence. KSDE requires that all schools accredited by the state board submit a report. And that does include, there are some accredited private schools. So, so that's what you're seeing here.
I think Dina Horst.
Sure.
Dina Horst has a question.
Sorry.
I think I figured it out, but just for clarification, part of the numbers that you have are, could include the same student several times.
Yes, that's correct.
And then we also know how many students actually themselves were involved in some incident. So am I correct in
You're correct.
understanding that?
So when you see incident, that, that is absolutely correct, that you could have one student who could have 50 incidents related to them. So, but when you see student, then we're actually talking just one student, even though it might represent multiple incidents. So, so that, that is a difference of whether we're looking at incident or student. But you're correct.
Thanks.
John Bacon.
Is the, thank you, is the number of minutes a student is restrained important? Has anyone asked that question? Or is it a data item that we collect?
We collect it, you mean if it's important for like technical assistance? Or how do we use the data? Is that what you're asking?
Or is it, is it a significant number? Are most of the restraints less than a minute? Or are there restraints that last for several minutes?
Yes, there are, the second, there are restraints that last for more than a minute.
Is that data that we ask for, or has anyone asked for?
We, we.
Seems like it would be significant.
Yes, and we do, that data is reported to us. And then that's why some for the maximum, I don't know if we've hit it yet. There are, we have data points where we have the maximum and the median, median duration.
Only for seclusion, not for restraint?
We do collect it for both. I think we get there, don't we?
Yes, we do. We collect it for both, but this would only be what's required by statute. But for technical assistance purposes, we analyze that. Absolutely.
I'd be interested to see those.
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to make a note of that. Okay. So, so going back to where, where we kind of left off. Number 10, then, the, the first three items that we looked at, which is the number of incidents with students who have an IEP, the number of incidents with students who have a 504 plan, and the number of incidents for students who have neither an IEP nor a 504 plan. Those three items then are broken out by building. So the, the bulk of then what we're going to skip over here is, is the building information. And just for your information, we have organized it by district. If you want to look at a specific building, so you'll take the far left column, look for the district number, and that's in numerical order. And then, then you can see the buildings within that district. So some important things to note here for now. Eighty-two schools, which is 6%, did not submit a report, and that's all. And then if it was 10 or greater, you'll see that actual number in there. So, so, so that is the bulk of the weight of your report. And to continue on then to what the, what else the legislature or the statute required, you can skip to page 140. And I'm going to get down there as well. So on a page 140, I, yes. We speak, we pick, we pick back up with number 11. And then if we go back to the original items, one through nine, at, at the very beginning, the statutes also requested that those items be split out either by age or ethnicity. And so from, from here to the rest, you'll see some of these same data points, only now they are split out by age, ethnicity. And, and then like, as I mentioned earlier, we've also done, we've separated out seclusion and restraint. But the statute was asking for totals, so that's why that's hired, or highlighted. So.
If you just have a moment, Kathy Bush has a question. I don't want to get too far away from the.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. It's actually a pretty simple, simple question, and I'm sure the answer's pretty simple, too. These three columns in the previous part, one is the number of physical restraint instances, and the number of seclusion restraint incidents. And then I assume the number of emergency safety interventions is basically the total.
The total. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
So I'm, are there any questions before we? I'm also going to, I'm going to blow through this pretty quickly because I, I think really to digest it, you might want to spend some time with it. But, but again, we have the IEPs, and then you can just see, we just look at the, and this, this one is incidents, not students, but incidents. And then aggregate, set out by age, so you can, you can look at the totals there. Again, we have the 504 plans by age. And then the number of students who have neither an IEP nor a 504 plan. Again, that's all separated out by age. And then, then the, the total incidents of all, all incidents, regardless of whether they had a 504, a BIP, or an IEP, again, by, by age there. And then now, the, when you see the behavior intervention plan, the BIP, that, that particular data set, anytime you see the BIP goes, reverts back to a student count, not an incident count. So we have that set out here. And then we have students physically restrained aggregated by age. Continuing on, the students placed in seclusion aggregated by age. And then we have the maximum and median number of minutes a student was placed in seclusion aggregated by age. The maximum number of incidents in which an ESI was used on a student, and that's aggregated by age. And then we get into our ethnicity tables, so we, we, we go back through that list and we do, we split it out by ethnicity. So the number of incidents ESIs were used on a student with an IEP, and that's aggregated by ethnicity. So the rest of those are all those data points split out by ethnicity. So that was our speed walk, and I'm, and, and it's the same thing, so you can, oh, sorry. And then the very last two, the maximum and median number of minutes a student was placed in seclusion, again, that's aggregated by ethnicity. And then the maximum number of incidents used on a student, also by ethnicity. So those were the last two. So that's, that's just the quick version of just all the data before you. Do you have any questions on the data before I turn it over to Laura to talk about what we do with that data?
Steve Roberts.
Very quickly, buzzing through this, I found six schools with numbers greater than 10. Am I close? How many did I miss? I went awful fast. How many schools are there with greater than?
We, we haven't counted them off the top of our head, so.
Okay. I went awful fast. I counted six. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Sally.
Mr. Chairman, if we have a, when we get to sit down and digest this material, are we, and are, we come up with questions, are we to call the commissioner or call these ladies? Or how do our questions get answered?
It's a good question.
That's an excellent question. Perhaps Randy should have the first right of refusal, maybe.
Randy has the first right of assignment. Got your name on there. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to mention a couple last things. Like Julie said, this is a ton of information, and I think the most common questions that you all will get now that this is available is, what are you doing about this? What is KSDE doing about this? And so I just want you to know that we have provided you with talking points, with information you can use. It's back at the beginning of your report. with information you can use. It's back at the beginning of your report. On page two, we talk about the data analysis that we do with our technical assistance system network staff. We have a team of people who work specifically on this issue. And we have been doing this long before there were even regulations. We analyze the data, and we provide technical assistance based on that data. And so, I think it's very important for you to note these sections on data analysis, and targeted technical assistance, and just know what KSDE and TASN are doing in response to this data. Our deadline to submit this to the governor and the legislature is a week from today, so that's why this says draft, but it will say final very shortly, and it will go across the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I would certainly recommend to board members that if they have questions as they go through this material, which is pretty in-depth, from Jim's report to, to the data that you've reported here, that we contact, you know, Randy, and he'll filter our questions and direct them to the right area. So, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to, assuming this is the finishing, the report, no more, okay, right? We'll take a break here until 10:42. The next item on our agenda is to deal with the recommendations of Professional Practice Commission, but before I do that, I would like to offer to Jim Porter our thanks on the ESA, ESI report, and good luck to your reporting. You will be reporting to both the House and the Senate tomorrow. Is that, what's your schedule for reporting?
The House Committee on Children and Seniors is at 9 o'clock in the morning, and that was the committee that originally sponsored
Okay.
legislation.
And that's tomorrow morning?
That's tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. And then tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 now is a joint House and Senate Education Committee.
Yes. And, and just to keep you up to date, as a board, we'll be presenting the vision to the House and Ed Committees, House and Senate Committees today at 1:30 following our lunch. Well, the next item we have is to deal with the Professional Practices Commission's recommendations. We have several, I just jumped ahead of myself here. Okay, good morning, welcome.
Start with the recommendation from the Professional Practices Commission for the licensure approval of Adam McElwain. The Professional Practices Commission met on November 23, 2015 for this case.
And you are recommending approval?
We are recommending approval.
So, I need a motion for that, to find, to adopt the findings for the Professional Practice Commission's as recommendation of license approval, as submitted. Moved by John Bacon, seconded by Steve Roberts. All those in favor, please signify by writing, raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. I see a 9-0 vote. Second, to accept the recommendations of the Professional Practices Commission for license revocation.
The Professional Practices Commission recommended the revocation of licensure of Deborah Ellenbrocht, Lockah, and Wesley Lowen.
Do I have a motion by Sally Cobble, seconded by Deana Horst? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right-
I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wanted to ask a question about, I'm trying to find the, the name, but the gentleman had some issue, Lockah, had some issue that he really didn't want it, want it publicized. My thought is, if he decided sometime to come back and get, and desire relicensure, will we have this revocation and the kind of the reasons behind it on file somewhere? So, it's not likely that he would receive a license?
If he were to apply in the future, he would have to indicate on, on his license application that his license had been revoked in the state of Kansas, and then all these past cases are, we are able to get information on them from the past.
Okay.
Some of us stay around long enough that we remember those, but maybe not that long.
I'm, I know you're not even allowed to be on that commission that long, but anyway, just so that it's, it's
It would be-
Not, it would be in file somewhere. Thanks.
Does your second still hold?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the findings from the Professional Practice Boards for license verification, please signify by raising the right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 9-0. The third one is a little bit more complicated. It has to do with not accepting the findings of fact of recommendation relative to Mrs. Ramos. I'm going to read a mo, that's, the first motion that we have before us is to not accept, adopt those findings of fact or recommendation as presented by the Professional Practice Commission relative to Mrs. Ramos. Then we'll be followed by a second motion of what we'll do next. Do I have a motion to John Bacon, seconded by Steve Roberts? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 9-0. The second part of this is, and I'll read this motion, is move that the, a matter of, of Suz, how do you pronounce, Suzette Ramos be remanded back to the PPC for further consideration and for issuance of findings of fact and conclusions to support the revocation. So, moved by John Bacon, seconded by Sally Cobble. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 9-0. Excuse me, Ken Willard?
In the video, the Ramos video, there was indication of a flaw in the license, in the license application, item 8, A and B, I think it was. It was referred to that doesn't not exist. I'm wondering if that's been fixed. We shouldn't have an application out there that doesn't work?
I believe that, I talked to licensure, and that application has been updated.
It has been updated, okay.
I'll double check with them, but that's
All right.
where I was told.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, good question.
That all you need from me today?
I think we're done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, um, yes, if you would, Randy has a special announcement to make before we go into our reports. Now, so Randy?
We, thank you, Mr. Chair. We, as you know, adopted five outcomes yesterday, and one of those was kindergarten readiness. And for many, many years, I was, anytime I look at many years, I look at Dale and say, how long, Dale, that we have really wanted to have early childhood in the, in the Department of Education, and not spread out throughout various agencies for, for consistency. And today, in the governor's budget, he proposed that, to put the infant toddler program and the children's cabinet into this agency, and the money allocated to this agency to run it. That obviously has to be approved by the legislature. I mean, it's part of the budget, so it's not, it's not done. But that is a very positive thing. And I think, without any explanation, I think the budget was released earlier, and maybe, maybe people think it was an unhealthy thing, the way the money was, the money was swept, and, and we, we think that's a bad turn to put in the general fund and then reallocate it back to us to run those programs, so in its entirety. And that's in the budget. So, just wanted to, to say congratulations, really, to the State Board, because, because now, the coordination of those things can happen under your guidance to really help pre-K readiness be a reality. And there were good things going on before, and I think it would just, will help us in the coordination as we look at, at every community. And Jim and I have been talking about it, and we wanted to announce it as soon as we could, because the budget was released at about 9 o'clock this morning. And we've worked on an official statement that we'll give to the press after this time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions right away, Ken?
Well, not really a question, but it goes to the question I had yesterday, and kind of puts that in our authority, in statute, if, if it gets passed, which resolves that constitutional question that we were talking about yesterday. So, I think it's a very positive thing, too. Coordination is what has been lacking.
Dale said that, that we've asked for that, and it came close to happening under Governor Sebelius, and then it kind of fell apart some way. So, this is not, this is, this is not political in any way in terms of that other, I mean, we've asked Democratic governors and Republican governors, and it's just been one of those things that many times hasn't even been considered. And so, we appreciate the opportunity, and it really speaks, I think, to trying to help the board reach their goals that you set forward yesterday.
Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Watson, does this give us domain over parents as teachers, or does it change our relationship with the organization, parents as teachers?
All early childhood programs, so infant toddler, parents as teachers, children's cabinet, all those, plus what we already have, four-year-old at risk, and we had some parents as teacher, parents as teachers program already. All of those will be under our guidance.
Sally Cobble?
You know, some of our daycare have preschool in them. Does that put us over daycare also? Or, well, is that going to be on, not?
No, there'll still be some, some Department of Children and Families money for daycare. But if it involves relative to, to actual pre-K experience, what we'd call pre-K, not daycare, we would have that now in our budget.
And the responsibility.
And the responsibility, yes. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Deana?
So, that, so some entities who have both, say infants and toddlers, might also, as well as pre-K, in other words, they serve infants through five-year-olds, that they might have two agencies that, two or three maybe that they
Currently-
Maybe somewhat like they already are.
Currently, they would have at least three.
Right.
Because you would have Department of Health and Environment for infant toddler, Department of Children and Families for daycare, and us for any systematic programs related to, to what we run. So, that, that will, that will shrink it down to maximum
So, it might lower it from three to two.
Yes, I, I think, you know, the, the exciting thing about this is that we can now hopefully provide a little bit more of a seamless system for parents
Right.
and providers as, as we go forward. And so, we, we believe this is a good thing. I think that the budget was released without any explanation, and so there are many people thinking that the money left, the money moved and then was reallocated back to our agency.
Which-
And it's full.
Which is-
Because I talked to Dale this morning.
Which is common.
Yeah.
When you're, when you're switching from one agency to another.
Again, this has to be passed by the legislature, and then they would, it would take effect upon the passage of that.
I would ask Randy that, as board members, we have some written information provided to us that will help us, because there's a lot of questions that'll come up after this, and questions from others, and local press or whatever. This, this is a big deal in the budget. You know, it, it's a big move. Like Ken said, it's, it's constitutional, there's money involved, there's speculation of why, why the governor would do X or Y, and I think we need to be prepared to answer a lot of those questions, but more technical questions of what does it mean to move the services and expectations along with the money to the department? You know, so we can answer those questions intelligently to the press, because we haven't really focused on that. This is coming kind of like a, kind of being out of, out of the blue.
Correct. So, I'll work with Denise, we'll try to get you out some talking points as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you very much. And, yes, I, I would like to send a message to the governor that it has been a position of the Department of Ed and prior boards that they move these to, so we can provide more streamlined services, you know, and have a better communication. And hopefully those will all happen and ultimately serve our, our, our students, especially those in pre-K, better.
Would it be to our advantage, to thank him, a little bit later some way?
Kind of just did.
I think, I think it should. I think it's a gesture
Yes.
of looking at the board goals and trying to give you the authority to have the money to do this in
Yes.
one seamless place, and-
I'd like, I'd like you to write a letter
Okay.
to him, thanking-
Is that the board wishes that?
You write a letter, you write a letter from the board, thanking him.
Okay, is it second?
His insight.
Second by Steve Roberts. Then, Sally, just to make perfectly clear, that there be a, a letter from the State Board Chair to the governor saying, thank you, appreciation, and, and
And for the insight.
and support.
Yeah, that you write it on behalf of the-
On behalf of the board, yes.
And then it talks about how it helps us further enroll.
Very good. So, and, oh, we have a, a motion on the floor for the chair to write a letter to the governor as described. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 9-0. Thank you very much. That's a very good, very good. Okay, next, we are going into our, our reports. I would, I would dare say and ask you, and I know this is, this is hard to ask, from a great group as we are, but we need to be out of here pretty fast. So, Randy, what time do we start lunch?
We need to, we need to make sure we're adjourned at 11:25 to get everyone over there and seated and ready for lunch. It's 12 o'clock, right Peggy?
Yes, and there will be a van available, if you guys want a carpool with that van, and then come back here in order to hear Randy's presentation. So, that's an option. I know a lot of people-
I will tell you that, that they will not start the lunch until we arrive. You know, so, you know, that, but then we have youngsters and, and those leaders who are going to be headed back after their program today, and we have a 1:30 meeting with the state, with the House and Senate Ed Committees for our vision report.
And what room will that be in? Because at first we announced it when it was just the Senate.
112 North.
112-
I have a question about that then, because normally that we have the lunch, and then they make a presentation. Are we going to walk out while they're making a presentation? I would hate that.
If we get there at 11, if we get there by 11:45, they can do everything for us in time for us to get back.
Okay, because I, I would hate that.
Yes, yes.
We're trying to get as, we're trying to get more into today than is humanly possible.
And I would suggest that if you have things that you, that you, in modifying your own reports and requests, that you send them, and we'll get them out to the, to board members. So, thank you very much. The first is Ken and Deana, the reports on the legislature. Oh, what about that?
I think we've already reported everything there is to report at this point.
That's a lot, too.
I'd say it's been reported.
Okay, communications, Sally?
Yes, we have a report. In your board packet, you have what we are recommending, really Denise and Peggy put this together, for our first two, first three
Yes.
postcards. And if I don't hear anything else, or Peggy doesn't hear anything else, that's what's going to go out. I'm going to do something really quick here, Jim.
Please.
Just because, okay, you know, when we go to the license, or on your income tax, you can donate to the wildlife. I'm not, I just wondered what we would think about if we, if we did something for- we, if we did something for Kansas Care and we asked the legislature if we couldn't be on people's income tax also, like this, or at the driver's license, have a little seal that somebody could pay an extra dollar when they get there and have that on the license plate. That might be something that wouldn't cost us anything, but might help education. Throwing that out there. I, I had to give several talks, didn't have the stuff I needed because of course I didn't ask Peggy for it. I had some of these printed, Walgreens. So it's just something you can do if you need something. I just paid for it myself. This is something that we did at the, at our church. And they go on your keychains. Now, I don't know about you, but when I give a presentation, I'd like to give that new vision statement out. And instead of doing it in a business card, which we could have made and give the business card, I couldn't make one of those. I tried and tried my computer. I couldn't get that done. But these are inexpensive because I know my husband bought them all for our church at the time. And they, it, we could put our logo on the front and Kansas Care, and then we could put on the back our new vision or something with it. And if you like the idea, I will look into the cost. Would you use them if we got them? Because I think I know who would pay for them. I think something visual ought to pay for these. So I'm going to go to something visual to get him to pay for these. They're, you know, I know he bought over a thousand of them and we paid for them, so.
Yep.
Pass that down to Randy. He didn't see that. He didn't see this. Okay, now, I have contacted, Randy, this kind of involves you a little bit. I've contacted the public, Smoky Hills Public Television Station. Michael is looking at the video that you have online to see if it's a quality that he can run again. And then maybe get back with you and follow up with some questions. Doesn't cost us any money. Then Chris Jewell out of Sublet, there's a new, it's kind of an online public information for Southwest Kansas. He also has a channel out there. He's going to interview me on the 27th, because I knew it was too close to ask Randy to change his, his schedule. But anything that we can get out and get in front of people. Also, if you have a community college in your town, if you would ask for that community college, your school board in that town, and I've, and I've also invited the chamber in that town, to all come together and listen to, or like I had Scott Myers, not Scott Myers, who's my guy, Jay Scott. He came out once. I've got another one set up in, in liberal. They're really, the chamber is really enjoying hearing this and trying to break down the walls and help the schools, these, these silos. And I tried a few of them out in my area just to see if they were going to be received, how they were going to be received. They are received very well. So if you have something in your area, that's something you could initiate and help get this vision out. And the, I would recommend that we try to get Randy on the community college state meeting. And has anybody contacted anybody to do that, Randy?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do you mind if I do that?
It's fine.
And the other one is Kathy said that you guys said something about getting in front of K-Board and the Technical Authority. But not, well, they usually come in at the same time as K-Board. So can we, do you have a date in front of them yet?
In front of whom, sorry?
K-Board and the Technical Authority.
No.
Okay.
We, we've had the joint meeting between K-Board and us, but past that, no. We, the plan that, that we have two members, Kathy and Dina, we have two members.
I'd just like to get you in front of the whole K-Board and the technical advisory usually comes in the same time. And if you could have some time on their agenda, I'll work on that.
Okay.
Okay, that is your communications report. If any of you have anything going on that you're trying to promote this vision across the state, let us know. And so we know what's going on. And we don't duplicate other things. Mr. Chairman, the rest of my report on some issues that I did, I can write up and send everybody.
Thank you very much. Board attorneys' report. Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding my monthly report. The only thing to advise is that the District Court in Kansas did issue a stay of the Petrella litigation until June, and I'll circulate that to, to the board.
June?
Yes.
All right. They're in a hurry. Okay. Individual board member reports. Janet Waugh, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked Jim because I've got, I've got some work for each of you. The Challenge Awards, I think I reported that to you last month, that each board member will be making the presentations. I met with Tom Krebs and Denise and Peggy last month and we came up with suggested ways to handle this. But what I want to tell you right now is we, Denise has a packet for each of you. So do not leave without your packet today, which basically gives you steps of how to do this. You know, you could change any way that you're comfortable with, but these are suggestions. And like, for instance, the first one is by February 1, contact the superintendent to notify him or her of each school district selected to receive the Challenge Awards. And then, you know, you can determine when you're, how you're going to do it, whether you're going to go to the board office, whether you're going to go to the schools, how you're going to do this. And-
Just one question real quick. They will already know their award winners when we call them? Or are we-
No.
Are we initiating that call?
Denise is waiting for us to do this so she can issue a press release. And bottom line, you're going to need to notify Peggy as soon as you've done this.
Peggy?
Our Peggy.
Our Peggy.
Because Peggy's involved in this, too. And is that right Denise? That's the way we had it set up. Because Denise could help me on this.
Okay.
And then, then Denise is going to issue a press release about this. But we will probably, we will be informing the superintendents of what, of which of their schools wants.
As long as we do it before the press release comes out.
Before the press release. And, and I would suggest, this February 1 to me is the latest date. Please do it right away. I plan on doing mine tomorrow. You know, so I would suggest that contacting the superintendent.
So in our packet we'll get today will be the list of winners?
Yes.
But that, that'll be embargoed from the public until February 1?
No, until, until, if all of us do it tomorrow, she could have the press release then at Friday.
Okay.
So you, you're talking about doing the contact-
Contact, contacting the superintendents, telling them who they are, you know. And then I don't even know, we have to have dates by that point, do we Denise?
No.
Okay. But this gives you instructions and, and then once the date, location, and presentation format had been confirmed, give that to Peggy, okay? And then Peggy will notify the Confidence Task Force because they would like to have at least three members attend each of the presentations.
And you're asking us to make the presentations in person at, at the sites of the, of the recipients of the award?
And you can do them, we've even discussed about like going to the school district, you know, like if you have like what you-
Go to a board meeting?
They want to go to the board office and do it at the board meeting.
Meeting.
You know, that, it's just kind of a, I think this is-
Work it out between you, work, work it out between you and the district.
Exactly.
Okay.
Because I've already seen my recipients. I mean, they're available. And I have two districts that are receiving them. I think Sally and Dina Howard are the biggest challenge. They've got quite a few.
So we, yes, and-
So we need to contact the school districts-
Yes.
And arrange a date to make the presentation.
Yes, you do, talk with superintendent, however you two decide.
Okay.
You know, of what will work best for the district or the school for the presentation. Do that. Then notify Peggy that you have done it. You'll have all these steps in here.
All right.
And then you're going to encourage, like encourage the superintendents to invite their legislators, where you want to give them a letter they can invite them with. And so anyway, there's all kinds of things. But all this is in here. If you have any questions, Denise has been wonderful, Peggy could help, you know. I, I don't, but anyway, I think this is exciting and this is something new we're trying this year. And each of you have this. And I think it's, in fact, they said if this works well, we may stick to this. So this is because of the testing, you know.
Yeah, the change in-
The change in testing. That's why we're, that's why we went this way. So I don't know if there's any questions, but I'm hoping that this will all be self-explanatory in the packets you receive. But this stuff's, you're not getting it till the meeting's over because we don't want to release the information, so.
And, and, and it is embargoed. It's, until it's released by the-
Denise.
Denise, which is around February 1. Or it looks like February 1.
Well, February 1 is our latest date. That's why I'm encouraging you to do that prior to that.
Yes, right, right.
And if you don't do it, I'm confident Peggy or Denise will be on the phone calling you.
Yes. Very good.
Please do it. Thank you.
Want to do the Community Service Award?
Go ahead. You are, you want to do it, or?
No, you.
Okay, okay. We had a me, I was, I was at the meeting, Jim. Can't remember who was at the meeting, all the-
The, the Confidence and Education Task Force, basically.
Everybody, you know, USA, KEDA, KASB. We're at the meeting and-
And the meeting was with the Lieutenant Governor?
With the Lieutenant Governor, yes. There seemed to be a lot of excitement about it. And the Lieutenant Governor assured us that he would come up, he would help fund the Governor Scholars, because that was a challenge, you know, that we were, we didn't want to start a new program without making sure our previous programs were, we didn't want to get rid of one and, because the Governor Scholars is great. We think this is a great program also. And anyway, so everyone was pretty excited about it. We plan on having another meeting this month.
January 28.
Yes, to continue figuring out how we're going to handle this. I mean, all kinds of things were thrown out about having the students come to the Capitol, having students go to the state fair, you know, and recognizing them, just all kinds of different suggestions were made. So, and the Lieutenant Governor's looking into those. He thought he could get the tickets to the state fair. And we thought the Capitol, but you're talking to a lot of people if we try to put all those kids, you know, because there'll be families with that Capitol. That'd get a little tight.
The three things that I would share to, to continue what Janet's saying is, number one, in our February meeting, we should be able to report back with much more specificity about the planning for this. We had anticipated, if you remember from the PowerPoint that I gave you, that January 29, we originally wanted to announce it. Well, that's not practical. We don't have enough planning together. And that's related to point number two, which would be funding. There's funding necessary for both the Community Service Award, but also funding to make the Governor Scholars Award successful and continue. So that funding has to be in place before we move forward on any of these programs, quite frankly. The third thing is, we, we did reach a number of decisions about, you know, moving it from, changing it from both seniors and juniors to just a junior award that would be recognized then through their senior year, for a number of reasons. But that was a, it was, that was a lot of, a lot of folks. The Kansas Volunteer Commission has been invited to participate as the, I, I call it the host agency. They'll do a lot of the, what Kansas Activities Association does for the Governor's Scholars Award, which is do the invitations and, you know, make sure the certificates and the photographer are there and postage and things like that. You know, so those are kind of some of the things. And it looks like we would probably have some, it, I haven't gotten a confirmation from the Lieutenant Governor, but I feel confident enough to say that we, we all were agreeable that the presentation would be made at the state fair on the first Monday. And Leadership Day, and they would be invited in. And I won't go through all the, we don't have all the details. But we're working, the state fair was very enthusiastic about it. And that presents, you know, there's a lot of work yet to do. And we have another meeting with this group and, and Lieutenant Governor in January. And when, in February, we should be able to give you some very specific details. So that's what we owe with that. It's a great deal. Next, on, on individual board reports, we'll go down and-
I'm going to pass because of time.
Pass, Ken Willard?
Pass.
John Bacon?
I've got two little quick items. It won't take but a minute. First of all, I was approached by one of the legislature members that said that there, if, if you're, let's say you're 70 years of old, of age, and you would like to get a trike or, you know, one of these three-wheeled vehicles, you, you would have to get a motorcycle's license to be able to drive that on the highway. To get a motorcycle's license in Kansas, you have to take that test on a two-wheel vehicle, not a three-wheel. So they're looking at making a modification to the licensure, which would ultimately affect us because we approved the licensure organization, or the, you know, the education licensure groups. And I don't know how many there is in the state, maybe several, because there, I don't know about motorcycle.
We learned yesterday.
But yeah, but so something that may be coming our way. So it's just a heads up. I don't know if we have to do anything, which comes first, is the designation on the license. If it's an M with an asterisk or something like that, then we have to have a curriculum to address that in our program. So, so that those individuals could take their test out of a two-wheel vehicle.
Okay.
The other thing that, you know, I wanted to throw out, just maybe something we can take up at a future agenda. But we have truancy laws in the state. And, you know, it's interesting to me when you get information from a local school district where they end a child from school for an extended amount of time. And so for like months. And so my question is, you know, I, I personally would like to know the circumstances around those events. If it's longer than, if the suspension would be longer than five days. If a local board is going to suspend a student for more than five days, then what else kicks in? Do they automatically have to report to an alternative education site? Or what happens to that kid? Because at the end of, of the, you know, two months, there's a good chance you're going to miss an entire year. So that, that I think might be something that we want to look at.
Very good. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Willard?
May I speak to that briefly?
Yes.
I just shared with John an incident that's in his district that I heard about this week. And it was a young man who, in a phys ed class, he, he'd been kind of bullied for various things and he was kind of stressed out about it. And one of his friends said, "Here's a couple of pills that'll help you." And they were over the counter cold medication or something. A teacher observed it. And this student who received those two pills, who was a basketball player and handing in, in his classes and all that, is being suspended for two solid months. And he can't get assignments to do at home or anything else. So he's basically losing this year because he's going to flunk all of his classes and he's losing his basketball opportunity for a mistake that he had made. So that, it seems a bit of an overkill. There may be a more story than that. I don't know. But in any case, that's an awfully long suspension for something like that. And so I think this is, John and I were having a discussion about it. And I think that's a, we need to take a look at that, too.
There are statutes that, that control and regulate those things as well as, as local board policies. So that would, it's a good conversation.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Thank you. Sally?
I have nothing.
Okay. Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to distribute these books that were recommended.
These are the used books?
These are used.
Are the words still good?
They've been defaced. And if there's any words in there-
It wasn't you.
I apologize.
Sure, I want a used book.
We have, most are hard copy. Supersoft, I thought I was getting hard copies.
That's me. This is Carol.
There should be one or two hard scenes.
Hi, Miss Nair.
And I'll hold comes back.
Okay, here's Carol. Here's Carol.
I don't have one.
You don't have one. We have hard soft.
Do we have to declare this on any forms or?
Yeah, I, I wanted to go away from new because the Ethics Commission would, would probably have problems with me giving you gifts that were valuable. Just in the spirit of things, turn to page 60. It's the beginning, I think it's page, it's chapter three, I think. Just go to page 60.
My 60's gone.
Because we talk a lot about how reforms change schools. And this chapter is how schools change reform. Now, this book was recommended to me by Mick Imber. Dr. Imber teaches in the College of Education at KU. And we had a conversation years ago, I mean, back, I believe it was 2008, when I first ran for this board as an independent. That's how long ago that was. And I said, you know, we could do, we could just change a handful of things. We could have great schools for poor kids. have great schools for poor kids. He says, well, do I have a book for you? So this book, so now you could also amend it, instead of a century of public school reform, we could have 120 years of public school reform. I wanted to share this with you because we're getting ready to tell the world that we're going to do it better than anybody else. Let us pray. So it's food for thought, I know you're not lacking for reading material, and I know we're short on time, so I'm not going to talk more about it, just please, please enjoy it, take the long term, refer to it often, I think, I think it'll be good for all of us.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the book. I look forward to reading it, I'll have several days coming up for, right, right where. Okay, Deana Horst?
I attended Concordia's in-service where Randy was giving, wow, Heath, I'm sure it went, it was much deeper or broader, not deeper, but broader than what Randy's presentation was. But I enjoy hearing the comments about Randy's once being in Concordia and the memories and so on, that went, kind of went along with, with the presentation. So that was pretty cool. Earlier, before that, I went to Prairie Hills, which is a district that is based in Seneca, but has schools in Whitmore and Axtel. And I went to all three locations, talked to students. One of the things that students told me was that the English T test was fine, the math was really hard, and a lot of it was because they didn't understand the terms. So they were requesting kind of a dictionary, I guess you could say, so they knew the terms were, and what I expect was happening was their books have more of a colloquial terminology of the same, same words that, the processes that were being asked for, where the test was asking for mathematical terms that mathematicians are likely to use. So we might consider making a suggestion about that. In Seneca, I was impressed with one of the things that they do. They, years, several years ago, had a, one of the teachers asked all the students to get together in groups and plan out some solution for world hunger. And this one group came up with a solution that involved their, one of their manufacturing companies that makes extruders, and they now work with a case state which has one of these extruders to make, to send to third world countries. This looks like rice, looks like lentils, but they're not. But, and they're much more nutritious than either of those two are. And they're pre-cooked, so in a country that has no other way of, of providing for themselves, they can just dissolve this in water, heat it up, and it's ready to eat, and it's probably one of the most nutritious meals they've ever had. So I thought I'd just kind of pass this along, and you could quickly look at it. And it's called Grains for Hope, and they have, Sabetha High School has continued to carry this on as a project. So very impressive that it was student, it began with students, and it is being continued by students.
Thank you very much. Jim Porter?
I anticipated the short phrase, my reports in your package.
Thank you. I have a report, there are several things that we need to deal with. First of all, I'd like to tell you that as President of NASB, one of my, my charges is to put together the committees for, around the country, for committees, and we have a GAC committee, which Carolyn was our past representatives, and some of you have participated in the GAC committee in the past. I have asked Jim Porter if he would be our representative on the GAC committee, because he asked if he could be more involved with NASB. And I said yes, and asked him to serve on the GAC committee, and what I need is a motion from you to approve. Send it, moved by Ken, seconded by Kathy, that Jim be the GAC representative to NASB. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes nine zero. I have before you a, and it has to do with standards. And there's a memo here from Randy relative to, or from, in the department, and basically what we're asking is, we're starting the standards, we, the review of the standards, and a timeline says, for mathematics and English Language Arts. The process where we are right now is, we need nominations for the committee. The committee will be select 25 members representing across our state, and we're asking you for recommendations. That's the bottom line of this committee. There's a timeline here, and.
And we'd really like to have one recommendation.
Oh.
From each.
From your district. Yes.
And then there'll still be some other people that are put on it, but at least it's good representation for each one of your districts.
Yeah.
It would be for each.
Yes, one for language arts, one for mathematics.
Each of the categories.
You can go online and do that, or you can just let Janet know directly where that nominee would be.
And for your information, there is a timeline that you can give, I've been, many people have asked me, you know, what's the timeline for the standards, and that's, that's there. So, good for that. There's a committee assignment sheet that's in your folder, just to make sure, if you see anything that's incorrect or not right, please let me know. Also, as included is, as per board policy, we'll have our initial six-month evaluation of the commissioner. And Peggy, what's the date they need to have that information back? To January?
It's January 24.
24th, I think.
25th.
25th. Well, it's in the packet. You know, and I need that time to bring it all together, and then we'll have an executive session in February, and then I'll report to, and meet with Randy and report to him what our recommendations were, and the evaluation. That's it for me right now, we need to get moving, so the last thing we have is board travel. Are there any additions or deletions from board travel? Kathy Bush?
I'm planning on whether I can attend the Kansas PPA board meeting, how will I understand that?
Okay.
I need salary to be in.
Sally?
I'd like, I'd like to attend the luncheon and the dinner.
Deana Horst?
I plan on being here probably to observe some things happening anyway, so I'll be here for that.
The Keen Conference?
For, for.
Legislature.
For.
Yes.
Right, the legislature, so I will, I think KASB has functioned that, has a legislating function.
Oh, on the 21st, I think 21st and 22nd?
Right, 21st and 22nd. I'm not sure which day is.
Which one you're going to come to?
The, it's the, probably the receptions, what I think they usually have us come to.
Other, did you get that, Peggy? Yeah, okay. No other changes? Motion by Ken, seconded by Kathy to accept the board travel as presented and added to, so those in favor, by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign, nine zero, we're adjourning to the, the Capitol Plaza.
Is it in the, I know where that is, but is it in the convention area?
It's in the convention center, right? Convention Center?
And at 1:30, we'll be at the.
112.
House and Senate presentation. 112 North.
It's in the convention area.
It's in the convention center, right? Convention Center?
And at 1:30, we'll be at the.
112.
House and Senate presentation. 112 North.